I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. The first thing is the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
Still moved.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of approving the consent agenda?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. The next item on the agenda is student recognition. I think it's Clint.
Yeah, I think Clint's gonna come up and help us get that started. We've had some great kids here and their families to help recognize them.
Good evening. Thanks for having me out again tonight to recognize our student athletes. It seems like I've been here at every board meeting recognizing our athletes and our students in the classroom, which is a great honor. Shows how hard they're working and how smart a kids we have in this district. First up, Coach Knigglu.
First of all, thank you for allowing me to come up and speak on behalf of some of these kids. I think this is probably the favorite, my favorite board meeting I get to go to because we're recognizing National High School Coaches Association Academic All-Americans. So these awards aren't limited to just Missouri or our region. This is a nationwide, really, it's a competition because these kids, when they're nominated, go up against all 50 states. And so for us to get some of these, some of our kids recognized, it speaks volumes. I'm just gonna call the kids up here and then talk a little bit about them. Tanner Allen, Ava Bonvillian, I know Jordan Peterbaugh is not here, she's at church camp, so that's absolutely acceptable. Drake Brinkley, Raya Wigfall, and Sidney Zimmerman. What Coach Graham is handing them is awesome plaques that are provided by the Booster Club, I believe, that recognize their Academic All-American status. And then what I have are the actual certificates from the National High School Coaches Association that they receive. I'm gonna start by talking about our seniors, which are the two ladies that are up here. Ava is being recognized for cross-country and track and field. She was a multiple-time All-Conference selection. She was also a two-time state qualifier for the cross-country team. Sad to see her go. I believe last time I talked to you, you're headed to Mizzou. Still planned? Cool. So we will, like I said, hate to see her go. She's a great runner, and I will definitely miss her. Raya is being recognized, and it's something extremely special. Raya is one of the first ever state qualifiers in our girls wrestling program, so that, I think that deserves a round of applause. For years, for years and years and years, there's gentlemen that will pop in and talk to our boy wrestlers, because that's a longstanding tradition. And I see Raya and Sidney, who's not here, at some point down the road, I would not be surprised after you're all grown up and you're hanging out, that you come and talk to some of the girls that are currently wrestling at that time. So to say that she goes down in history is a true statement. It's pretty cool. Tanner here is also being recognized for track, I'm sorry, cross-country, wrestling and track and field. Tanner's biggest accomplishment this year was qualifying for the state wrestling tournament. And Drake, down on the end, is also being recognized for wrestling. Drake is a multiple-state placer in, for our wrestling program. And the best thing about Tanner and Drake is they're gonna be back. And so are, so is Jordan, in absence here. Like I said, she's at church camp, but Jordan is coming back as the number-one female runner on the cross-country team, also a state qualifier. And Sidney, who's not here, is also heading off to bigger and better things. She's a senior. She was our first, one of our state qualifiers, first state qualifiers for the girls wrestling program, and she's also our first state place winner, as she received All-State honors at the state tournament this year. She's heading off to Cornell College up in Mount Vernon, Iowa, next year to continue her wrestling career. One thing I'd like to say about these guys is, it's funny, I was just talking about this at cross-country earlier this week to my athletes, there's all kinds of different student athletes. And without going into detail about every single student athlete, what I will say about these guys and gals up here is they make a coach's job very easy. We don't have to, we don't have to get on these kids about staying, staying on top of things in the classroom. We don't have to tell these kids to talk to their coaches or talk to their teachers when they're gonna be gone for an event. They're already on top of it, and they all carry a 4.0 or above on a weighted grade scale. So I'm extremely proud of these guys.
Thank you, guys, for allowing me to, and Coach Graham, to be up here and represent Hannibal Baseball. We've got seven Academic All-State athletes from this year, and I think before we recognize them, it's important to note that our team was fifth in Class V as a whole unit. That would include other guys that aren't just on this exclusive list, which is a big accomplishment. We have 3.58 GPA as a varsity team, and I'm very proud of the work that they've done in the classroom especially, and then on the field. The All-State, the Academic All-State baseball requirements are extremely tough. Our guys have to have at least a 3.5 GPA, and then either be in the top 25% of their graduating class, or along with the GPA, or have a 24 ACT score. So the requirements are very tough, and to get seven of our 14 roster guys is a pretty big accomplishment this year. I'm gonna do kinda like what Coach Knigglu did, and just bring them up, and then discuss what they were able to accomplish in the classroom. Reed Holliday, who is gone tonight playing baseball, but I know he's representing us well in Kansas City. Connor Asbury, Colton Dryden, Cody Allen, Brody Wilson, Jackson Lay, and Azariah Tucker. We have several guys standing here that definitely have better or at 4.0 GPAs. Of course, on the unweighted scale for Academic All-State, most of them are very close to that as well. Reed ended up with a 3.9 GPA on an unweighted scale. Brody Wilson had a 3.77 GPA. Azariah Tucker had a 4.0 GPA and was top of his class. Connor Asbury had a 3.9 GPA. Cody Allen, a 3.67 GPA. Jackson Lay, 4.0 and also top of his class. And Colton Dryden had a 3.86 unweighted GPA. All these guys really fell within the top 20% of their class, and to have two that are at the top of their class is very exciting. And one thing I would say about these guys standing here and the others that couldn't join us tonight is that they represent our baseball program really well. It's one thing to be good on the field and to accomplish those kind of things, but in the classroom, and like, kinda like Coach Knigglu said, not having to worry about what they're doing away from the baseball field is, is a big deal for us and the way they represent us. So congratulations to you guys.
Up next, we have choir director, Mrs. Kate Fuller.
I teach choir with Sarah Curz at the middle school and the high school, and we are really excited that we had four students selected for the All-State Show Choir this year. And so I'll have those students come forward. We have Casey DeStefany, Kendall Curz, Noah Hughes, who could not be here tonight, and Jackson Lay. So these students, as they come forward, this is all voluntary for them. They have to work extra hard to do an audition for this amazing group that they're going to get to be a part of this summer at our MCDA conference. Mrs. Curz and I will attend the Missouri Choral Directors Association Conference this summer in Springfield, Missouri, and we will attend the conference as teachers, and then these students will be preparing for their concert that they will have on Wednesday of that week. And they will have rehearsals with the clinician that is there, and with the choreographer, and they will learn three songs, a little bit on their own right now, and then they will rehearse them with the clinicians when they get there. But they will know an entire show choir show in two and a half days. And so they'll work really hard when they get there. A little bit about their audition, they, there was two parts to the audition. They had to do a singing audition, and then they also had to do a dancing audition. And a couple interesting things about that is it's completely student-prepared. Mrs. Curz and I give the option for these students to prepare, but they kinda have to do it on their own and work really hard to do that. And so we send in the videos, and they, they did really, really well, obviously. The dancing audition is very interesting in itself because when they dance, they are not able to sing with the, with that audition. And all of the dancing that we do all year, they sing the entire time. And so when you start doing that, it's hard to remember what dance moves go with what words, and the words aren't there, and so they really have to concentrate a lot for that, and it's kind of an interesting thing that they had to do there. But they are looking for facial expression and emotion when they're dancing, and these four students are really proud that they are going to represent us at the All-State Show Choir this summer. I think that's it, and so we're really excited for them. Thank you for letting me share.
Now for our band director, Mr. Mike Foer.
This year, we had students selected to the first-ever All-State Show Choir Band. During the school year, our, some of our jazz band students create the RCR combo, and they travel around with the show choir to play the music for the, for the students as they perform. And so they go around the state this year. They had a very successful year. They won best combo at all of their competitions, which was a really big feat when you're going up against schools much larger than you. And so this year, the MCDA has transferred from having adults as the band, because it's only a quick two-day practice and performance, to having all students. So 12 students were selected out of the entire state, and we have four of them, which is pretty awesome to have for the first year. So I'll have our students come up. We have Aiden Odom, Eva Gassaway, Braden Distel, and Jay Arnold. So they will, yeah. They will travel down the same week as the choir students. They will only be there for the Tuesday and Wednesday, so they'll rehearse during the day, Tuesday, Wednesday, and then play the concert that night. So they have music they are working on and learning, and then they will get it as close to perfect as they can and play the concert. So it's very exciting, and it'll be fun for them to get to join students from other schools of that caliber to get to perform like that. So we're very, very proud to have four out of the 12 for the first year, so.
Once again, thank you very much for allowing me to recognize these student athletes, and I've already got some arranged for the August board meeting, so I'll be back in August to recognize some All-State soccer players and All-State track athletes. So, thank you.
Oh, there's one more that Michelle's gonna make.
I don't believe she's here tonight. She is active in Row Kappa, National Honor Society, National Technical Honor Society, This is for the Pirate Student of the Year. History Club, Pre-Med Club. She enjoys reading, writing, and playing the piano and making jewelry. The freshman student of the year is the, we, we. Kalia was a freshman this year.
And then one last quick recognition.
She is a member of the Pirates Girls, Pirate Girls Basketball Cheer and Track Teams.
We wanna recognize Susan at her last board meeting, and thank her for her 34 years of
She loves to work out, play pickleball, and spend time with her family and friends.
service to the Hannibal Public Schools, and we all appreciate everything you've done, and you're gonna be missed, so.
Thank you very much.
Sophomore Student of the Year is Alejandra, Alejandro Gonzalez. He was a sophomore this year.
You know, I was looking back at some old articles when I got different jobs in the
He is the son of Marty Gonzalez, member of the Pirate Cross Country and Track Teams, also a member of Fellowship of Christian Athletes and Student Council.
district, and the one thing that I consistently said, I'm glad I owned up to this, is I wanted
He is a member of Holy Family Catholic Church, where he attends youth group, and he is a huge Cardinals fan.
to do all of my years in the Hannibal School District, and so I'm proud to know that I
Junior Student of the Year, Madeline Harvey.
accomplished that. Wonderful school district. Richie, you've got a jewel here. Take, I know he'll take good care of everybody, and it's been an honor and a privilege, and
She's the daughter of Matt and Amanda Harvey.
I'm grateful.
She's involved in Key Club, Pre-Med Club, National Honor Society, National Technical
I really am. Thank you.
Well, you're gonna be missed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Honor Society, Row Kappa, and Pirate Soccer.
And the next item on the agenda is program evaluations.
Outside of school, she loves art and travels playing soccer for her club team.
Yeah, and in your packet, we had quite a number of program evaluations, as you saw, and I think probably the best way to go about this, unless you all have a different thought, would be just entertain any questions. I know we had our Title I from our elementary principals, our instructional effectiveness in curriculum from all of our administrators, and then student satisfaction from the high school, and then last but certainly not least, technology. And so Mr. Watkins provided that for you. I think there's some great data in there. Shows the hard work that has gone in each of these programs, and I think it's something to be proud of. I mean, there's always room for growth. That's why we're a great district. And if you have any questions, we'd be happy to entertain those as best we can.
Are there any questions?
There's a lot of reading.
That was. Do we need to approve them, or?
No.
No?
No.
All right. If there's no questions, the next thing on the agenda is the retention report.
So I provide that for you guys each year, and you can see the 2025 updated numbers there, and also I provide those longitudinally. They're back from 2018 up until this year. And again, I don't need, know that I need to talk about them much, but if you have any questions, I'd be happy to entertain them.
Are there any questions? All right. The next thing on the agenda is a construction update.
Okay, included in your packets, the update provided by Bob Borgmeyer, project manager. And we've got a lot going on. If you've been by the stadium, you can see a lot of progress there. They are still on track to be primarily finished by the end of July. Tennis courts are in progress. We've had a little bit of an issue there with some subgrade problems. We're working through that with the architect to get that corrected. Parking lots are on track. We've got a renovation going on at Corp Gym Innovation Campus. We've got our general contractor selected, and I know, haven't seen a lot going on. We've had a lot of demolition work that went on inside with our maintenance guys and some of our ag students, and so Ben Hur Construction's excited to get that going. Just waiting on some information from the USDA, which has been a part of our process that's kinda slowed us down all along, but excited to get that one moving. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Any questions?
Yeah, the subgrade issue with the tennis courts, was that impacted by that lightning strike?
Well, we're trying to find that out, actually. That's something that Bob and I were talking about today. So we're not sure it's causing water to pond on there. If you drove by, you can see there's quite a bit there. We're trying to figure that out, if the lightning caused that, or if it was just an issue with the fabric that was originally installed. So we're in process of determining that. That's kinda what's put us on hold, so.
Has that ever happened before?
We've had some water issues with freezing and heaving there with the nets over the past, and, and I think we're not sure if that was what was causing it, but that's, that's what they're kinda trying to determine now, so, yeah.
All right. The next thing on the agenda is a summer school report.
Yeah, and that's an addendum there at your tabletop. And I guess basically, just to summarize it, I think we had a great summer school. All of our summer schools have concluded, with the exception of a couple programs at the high school, which will be concluding on Friday. Again, none of this could be possible without, first and foremost, our families sending their children, which we're always grateful of, but also our staff. We had a wonderful outpouring of staff, people utilizing their career ladder. The Career Ladder Program, it's a great opportunity to see how, how those are helping with our kids, and our administrators who ran those summer schools, as well as our support staff. So it's there for you. The only thing that isn't there that they may need to report later would just be numbers for our wellness and our credit recovery at the high school, which will be finishing up on Friday. Other than that, this is up to, up to date.
What's the construction one at the middle school?
Good question. You wanna talk about that, or do you want me to?
No, I can't. So we had a generous donation from a community member who's worked in the construction field, that had been employed with Emory SAP, and wanted to introduce more students to construction and kinda encourage that. So that donation was made in order to provide materials and put students into some field trip experiences, and bought some of the curriculum they use, and so really, it was a, just a great, great way to jumpstart students' interest in that area, so.
That's neat. The next item on the agenda is the year-end review.
Yeah, I know I've done that the past several years. It's just sometimes it's nice to be able to reflect on a, on a school year because, you know, everybody gets busy, and we forget sometimes the many blessings that we have that go on each and every day. You heard several of those with the students tonight that were being recognized, and, and those coaches and directors that were here that spent huge amounts of time. But I just, you know, I just wanted to really share kind of a compilation of the good things that have gone on in different departments, different buildings and whatnot, because I think that's good for you all to see. And I, I don't, I mean, I could point out a lot of these. It's hard to identify which ones are better than the others, because they're all great. But I wanted to share that with you, and if you have any questions, by all means, you can ask, but that's what this report is.
Any questions? The next thing is student perfect attendance.
Yeah, this is always a fun one to report. So, you know, I think we all know from our, our individual occupations and just in life general, being, showing up is a huge accomplishment. And so I'm very proud of these students that we have listed at each of our schools that were able to accomplish perfect attendance. And I mean, they weren't gone at all, and that is extremely difficult. And I'm just really proud of those kids, as I know you are too, and wanted to call attention to them. I think it says a lot for them and their families, putting that as a priority. I think that will, I think we would all agree as adults, that's gonna help them in their future employment, and just whatever avenues they end up going. So this is something that's very exciting to see, and if you look at the second page and the third page, there's three pages of names, and so it's pretty phenomenal. Wanted to share that with you.
Can you see that is perfect attendance?
Yeah.
And then the next is staff perfect attendance.
Yes, and I tell you, the same, that everything I just said is kudos also to the staff, and I tell you, anyone that works in the school district, probably like any job, you know how difficult it is when, and time to time, people have to be gone for various reasons, very realistic reasons. But these people, I think this is really a testament to their, you know, their endurance and their, their dedication to their positions. Some of these are 12-month employees, and many of them aren't, and so just very proud of them. It's, you know, we, we keep talking about substitute teachers and substitute staff, and how difficult it is to get people sometimes, and, and, and I just think it says a lot that these people are, are doing their part to, to show up and to be here, because we know we can provide a better education to kids when our staff is here and present.
I think that's what I want.
Yeah.
The next thing in on the agenda is our meeting day, and there's been a suggestion that instead of having our... Instead of having our next meeting August 20th, because that's the day before school starts, we would move it to August 13th, if that works for everybody.
I'll open the application.
Okay. Do we need a motion to move it, or just?
Probably so, yes.
So I'll make a, I'll make, go ahead, Ann.
Mm-hmm.
So Ann makes a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Blaine, any discussion? All in favor of moving the meeting to August 13th?
Aye.
Opposed? Perfect. So it'll be Wednesday, August 13th, at the middle school. The next item is old business. There's some board policies.
Yeah, and these are policies that I gave you last month, and I know I didn't have any questions, but those, assuming that there aren't, those are up for approval, unless you have any questions or anything like that. And, and, and once these are done, and you will be seeing, I should mention, since you guys have been doing a lot of these, you will see in the next upcoming days on our website, all of these posted, and it looking a lot more user-friendly, and I think it'll be a much, much better usage of those. I was talking to Richie, and he's familiar with Assembly, which is the, the company that does that, and I think that's working well in the district that he's in as well. So, yeah, there you go.
There was just one. On GB-EBC, it's a policy about background checks, and because we live in close proximity to a neighboring state of Illinois, I noticed that Illinois wasn't listed on the database for background checks. So do we routinely do background checks in the state of residents of employees that live, say, in Hall or other areas across the river? Or should we consider adding that?
What, what letter was that? What was that?
It was GB-EBC.
GB.
I believe, I think it was the background check.
GB.
Alphabet soup. Yeah. Yeah, I just didn't know if we needed to think about adding maybe Illinois.
Page 141.
If that's the state of residence of the employee.
I'm sorry?
We should have a background check.
Yeah, it'd be for any state, yeah.
They should. We definitely should.
Right.
I think it's covered, essentially.
It is covered. With any state, it's covered, because they all work through the highway patrol system. And then, if you remember, I don't know if it's been two or three, four years ago, I'm not sure, the Family Care Safety Registry started being required as well, which I think is a good thing, because that's nationwide. So that's up to you guys, how you wanna do that.
What's the wording, Doc? What's the wording that needs to be looked at? Let me see if I got that. Because I know they have to do it through, every state has, it has to be done. I think it specified, let me look at it real quick. I think it specified the states that we were using, which was Missouri.
And because we live in close proximity to a neighboring state of Illinois, I noticed that Illinois wasn't listed on the database for background checks. So do we routinely do background checks in the state of residents of employees that live, say, in Hall or other areas across the river? Or should we consider adding that?
What letter was that, what was that?
It was GBEBC. I believe, I think it was the background check. Alphabet soup. Yeah, I just didn't know if we needed to think about adding maybe Illinois. If that's the state of residence of the employee.
I'm sorry? Yeah, it'd be for any state, yeah. It is covered. With any state, it's covered because they all work through the highway patrol system. And then if you remember, I don't know if it's been two or three, four years ago, I'm not sure the family care safety registry started being required as well, which I think is a good thing because that's nationwide. So that's up to you guys, how you want to do that.
What's the wording that needs to be looked at? Because I know they have to do it through, every state has, it has to be done. I think it specified, let me look at it real quick. I think it specified the states that we were using, which was Missouri, and went on down through that. And it included the family registry through the DHS, but I don't think that it had a reference to Illinois' database, but.
Wouldn't the wording need to say anybody working here will have it regardless of their location?
They are required to.
I know they are, but instead of listing the state, just a blanket.
You could add a clause and say, you know, along with Missouri or current or past state of residence.
Well, in that first paragraph, I was just looking. And if you can point out an area to identify that, please do. But I know it says, "As part of this effort, in accordance with this policy, the district will require criminal background checks of employees as well as certain volunteers and others present on district property." And then it designates the superintendent or designee to develop these procedures. And of course, procedures aren't part of the packet. These are all policies and the procedures are administrators and superintendent do. So I guess you guys just need to tell me what you want to do, if there's.
And I think it's pretty extensive and it has other databases required by law. I guess if you want to make a motion, we can see if there's enough support to change it. Dr. Evans?
Yeah. I should have had it already bookmarked in my little deal, but I didn't bring my little. Well, we can figure out the exact wording of it if you want to. But just to, I would make a motion to include current or past state of residence of employees, to include their databases in the check.
In what section would that go in?
GBEBC, but I'm looking at it, there it is, okay. So it says definitions, criminal background check. It talks about the FBI, the Missouri State Highway Patrol, the Family Care Safety Registry, which is from the DHS in Missouri, the Missouri Case Net. And then it says, there's a number five, other databases required by law or by the district. So one of the requirements by the district I would recommend including would be, so if you had, you could push that number five, other databases, push that to number six and put a number five in there of database registries in current or past residences of employees.
The FBI search would cover any state that they might have.
I don't know that it does necessarily, but.
Well, I know that when we get those back, so for an example, in news, I'm just using this as an example. I'm not saying I did this, but if I were to go to, on vacation, Idaho and somehow get arrested, but I work in Missouri, it would be reported to me even though the incident occurred in Idaho. Because there's a network of that. I won't put Joel Combs on the spot, but police probably know that. I saw you back there, Joel.
Maybe we could pass, maybe we could pass all of them except that GBEBC and then just find out exactly what the reporting status is for those kinds of.
Well, and again, just, these have been, had been carefully vetted and by attorneys too. So I know that they would look at that.
I think Joel can help us out here.
Sorry, Joel, to put you on the spot, but I'm not a highway patrol person or a policeman, but.
Okay, so that alleviates that concern then, so never mind, we don't need to change it.
Okay, thank you, Joel.
Thanks, Joel.
Tyson, did you have something?
Yes, in policy GBM, that brings up the same issue that I had with policy HC, except this is with staff grievances. And my issue would be, and I've had this come up a lot of times, but this is with direct supervisors and the principal, or the direct principal. The problem would be if a staff member had a grievance with their direct supervisor or the principal, that in step one or step two, that would raise a concern of a bias or retaliation, even if unintentional. So I would like to see, especially for that timeline in step one and step two, if MSBA would give us a, some guidance on what we could do if that became an issue.
Let me clarify and make sure I'm understanding you. So if I had a staff member file a grievance against, there's not a principal here, pick on, we'll say Jason Nolan, he's not here, but we'll say that, just, or building principal. Then I would receive that grievance. And obviously, if it were against an administrator in that example, I wouldn't have Jason be the one to investigate it because that would definitely be a conflict of interest.
Correct. But in step one, it says, you know, there's 10 days. You know, in step two, there's five days. But to clarify what that timeline is, especially since it jumps right to the superintendent, it gives a different timeline. But also, because we have situations where there could be like a personal bias in that next compliance officer to add, what I said before, that next step with that grievance policy committee.
So you think if I would reach out to MSBA and maybe just ask for some additional guidance on that as far as the timeline for numbers one and two, correct?
And to add a grievance review committee in that. I know it didn't pass last time, but I feel like that is sometimes necessary.
So do you want to make that a motion to see if there's support from the board too?
Absolutely. I make a motion that in circumstances where grievances directly implicate an individual where who would normally be responsible for responding under steps one or two, the superintendent or designee shall appoint an alternative administrator to review or respond to the grievance and reassign that impartially. And also that there would be a grievance review committee assigned to that grievance. So that where a board member is assigned, at least one board member is assigned to that grievance review committee.
I just have a question on a formality. I think we had that motion last time and it didn't carry, so can you make a new motion of the same?
It's a different policy, I think you can. I think because, yes, it was, we talked about it last month, but it is a different policy, so I think that you can.
And this is a staff grievance because of the different dynamics.
Because the other one was students. Correct.
And this actually comes up quite often, for me it does.
So we.
So there's a motion.
We have a motion. Did you write that down, Martha? Oh, I was just wondering if you could re-say it, but we have a motion. Okay, could you, yes? Okay, so we have a motion, is there a second? A second? And then now, any discussion? I have the same concern about last month, that forming another committee with a board member, I don't think that's necessary.
Well, I have a concern that a lot of things don't reach the board level and that we are unaware of things that don't reach us, that probably should be reaching us.
My thought is, if this is something that will make our schools, our teachers and faculty feel more represented, that it's a good idea. Hopefully, this is a rarity, but they'll be heard, that's my steal.
But then if it was brought to the board and we didn't take action on it, that board member that's set up the committee would have to excuse himself from his oath. That board would take, because they would be biased as to what they've earned here.
My question is beside the board member, who's going to serve on this committee? How are you going to pay? Because we have so many committees, I will see people raising their hands saying, yeah, yeah, pick me, I want to be on committee. That's the one thing I'm concerned with is. Is, I'm not going to be a mind.
That's part of what retaliation, that's what's happening, happening a lot.
No, I agree with you. I've seen it before.
That's the problem.
I think the question would be used on the committee because, you know, these would be confidential information, so.
It makes sense to have your teacher organizations both represented, at least. And then whoever else would deem necessary.
We have a motion, is there any other discussion? All right, so I think we should do a roll call to make sure all our votes are heard. So we have a motion and a second, Ann?
Yes.
Ron? Dr. Evans?
I'm standing.
Aye.
Aye.
Naye.
No. So it doesn't carry then if it's, so it doesn't carry because it's three to two, don't want extension, right? Three bids. Oh, four, we had four.
Four.
So it doesn't carry.
Sorry, I hit my math wrong.
Yeah, sorry. I asked for a question.
The motion is to ask a question.
Oh, hold on, so you were, you didn't want that put in now? Oh, I thought you wanted to change the board policy. I got you, so we didn't even need a motion for that.
No, you can ask me just to do my work and I can pass it on to Richie.
So when they go to approve the rest of the thing.
Once you, once you get.
Make that one out, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Are there any other questions on the policies from last month? All right, so can we get a motion to approve the board policies? Do we want to pull that one out? And then, except for GBM.
Can I still move? A second.
Second, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The next item is the 2025 meal prices.
Okay, our food service director, Mr. Ryan, has worked with D E S I and School Nutrition Program to ensure that we are compliant for school lunch program pricing. And based on the tool that they helped us fill out, it did say that we need to increase current high school and middle school lunch prices from $2.85 to $2.95. Increase elementary lunch prices from $2.35 to $2.45. And then breakfast prices will remain unchanged at the high school and middle school at $1.85. And breakfast prices will remain unchanged at the elementary schools at $1.35. And that would be a motion from the board to do that.
I have a question. Do we break even on that?
So you're not, correct me if I'm wrong, we're supposed to make money on that?
Well, I know you're not supposed to.
Yeah, so they're just making sure we are breaking enough money to cover our costs. And we do actually, within this, have the option to raise breakfast prices, but we are recommending not to do that just because we're raising it.
What if we don't raise it?
Then we're out of compliance, they're basically trying to.
I remember this exact conversation about 10 years ago. Exact conversation, 10 years ago.
I'll make a motion for the 2025, 2026 meal pricing.
A second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, motion carries. The next thing is the 2024, 2025 second semester bus routes.
Okay, those are in your packet and I would be requesting a motion to approve the prior semester.
I'll make that motion.
A second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. The next item are food bids.
This is actually an addendum on the food bids because those came in after we were able to send them out. And I believe we would have to make a request to approve each bid individually. So I would recommend to make the prime food bid, award that to Kohl's Wholesale.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, request of approval of the paper bid for Kohl's Wholesale.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
I'd like to request you approve the milk bid from Prairie Farms.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
And lastly, the trash liner bid from Unipack Corporation.
Who is Unipack Corporation?
They're actually out of Florida, I believe. And we've saved quite a bit of money and they're actually, they bid less this year for next year, maybe this year.
So moved.
Any, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. The next thing on the agenda is a new set of board policies.
Yeah, we have another board policy for you. You might just, if you got it there in front of you, you might just cross out what was in approval July 16th and put approval August 13th. So you've got some time to read through these. If this is the last packet of these, then there may be some others based on the legislation that just went through. So you'll have some more, but these will be added once you get them approved, just like we have these other ones.
See how smart you guys are to get down.
The next item are approve the 2025, 2026 non-certified salaries.
Okay, in the cover letter that I prepared for you, I went through some details. And I don't want to leave it to you, but I think it's worthy of mentioning. There was some legislation that was passed and it didn't discuss for a while. And then last minute, education was kind of pulled into that, which mandated $13.75 per hour, effective August 28th. And then school districts and other entities gaining $15 per hour. So the recommendation, as Tim, Richie and I have looked at this, is that we ask you to approve for the letters from Kent to be written for $13.75. And then that would obviously be fluctuating in salary table. So that always going to get $13.75, but that would be the basis, if you will. And then in January, prior to January 5th, December 8th, something like that, then you would, they'd probably come back to you for the $15 and that would keep us in compliance. And so, you know, obviously, I think probably all of us could say, I'm very pleased by that. That was just a hard surprise to get last minute because, you know, of course, that affects funding and whatnot. But I'm very happy that that's going to happen. And so that's my recommendation. So the two, starting August 28th would be $13.75. And then another recommendation would come, probably December or January, $15. And that would keep us in compliance.
Motion. Second.
Any discussion?
I do have a question. I work at Learning Opportunity Quality Works and we have a number of people that are gratefully employed here, but their salaries aren't, I think, where they should be. And I wanted to address that.
I can respond to that. So typically, this public school district was not required to follow federal, or I'm sorry, state minimum wage, just federal. And this will actually bring them up to compliance to be at the state minimum wage. So ours has been minimum, our base salary was $12.36, which as of today is below that. But due to this new legislation, we will be in compliance with state minimum wage. And they will all be paid that wage also, those employees will all, all of our hourly employees will get that rate.
My friends will be very happy saying.
This is the first time that's ever happened and so, like, some states, you know, not abiding by the federal slavagism of the state, so.
And then I have a question, where do school nurses? And then I have a question. Where do, where do school nurses fall in and was anything done or with theirs?
Theirs will fall in more similar to certified staff.
Okay. So we have a motion in a second for the support staff. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. And then the next item is certified salaries.
Yeah, this, I tell you, I told Ted, so I've obviously done this for a long time. We've never had this situation where, you know, the House has passed through the budget and then the Senate as well. And now it's in, um, the governor's hands. And so, um, part of the reason why we were wanting to, we were kind of, we're out of our feet. Some might say we wanted to know what he was going to do with the student ad, or the state advocacy target, which is going to determine the state funds, or sometimes it's referred to as the foundation formula, how much those funds would be. We still don't know that to be exact. Um, and then this could be very transparent. Um, the other thing that makes it quite concerning is, um, you know, the House voted for the lower rate, Ted, you'll have to help me with those numbers. And then the Senate voted the higher. Um, so the question is, what's that going to settle down at? One, you know, depending on how you think, the, the concern that a lot of superintendents are, um, having, and we're being told is, you know, depending on what the governor does. And we know this in education because this has happened before, because they've got to have a balanced budget. It could be that, um, withholdings would happen so that it could be that bottom dollar. So unfortunately, as a result of that, we have crunched numbers and I don't think anyone's pleased with having to do this, but it's going to be extremely difficult to know what to do. We were looking at either one percent or two percent, which I know is much lower than what we wanted to be able to do. We've talked to several people and unfortunately we're in limbo and that has to be determined by the end of this month. But we're leaning towards one percent being, being the, the safer route at this point, just because there's so many things up in the air. And part of that is, and again, I don't want it to sound bad because, uh, a larger piece of the pie would be the support staff, which I'm glad about too. I'm not trying to say that not, but we have to, you know, make it all go around. And I know our certificate staff would be pleased about the support staff getting that as well, but it, it just ties our handles a little bit. So a one percent recommendation is all comfortable with at this point.
That's about all you can do if possible with holdings. There's not much else you can do.
And the, and the problem with the holdings, withholdings could happen anytime, even after July one.
Correct. So we had some conversation about that at the finance committee. Can you kind of relay the considerations there from that?
Yes. So we had kind of gotten some more information yesterday just before the finance committee and I tried to share that. Essentially, um, our original plan was to ask, um, it's in the packet here, to ask to approve the salaries going to go to a step and then see what was going to happen with the governor. And I got some information from entities that we work with, uh, MoCap who we invest with and some others that if we would approve it, if you were to approve it in that manner where no withholdings took place, problem is the governor from the goal, anytime from July first to, to June thirty for next year. So that would be no guarantee. We also have concerns just with future years, how finance will look. The governor has a, um, a group that's looking at the whole way, the formula that is paid. Um, and typically in years past, what they've done is withhold transportation dollars is what happened. So this year and the last year, I believe, we were able to get our full, full transportation funding, but that hadn't happened for a long time. Um, and that's, that's been great. Um, you know, we were supposed to go from sixty-seven, sixty state advocacy target, um, and move that up to seventy-one, forty-five. That's actually approved. But where we're worried about is withholdings, even if that is, that does take place and we can pay on that. And typically they don't start, we don't get our payments at that higher number to start with anyway. They start somewhere in the middle. And then, um, for lack of a better term, kind of make up the difference as the year goes on with some supplemental payments. There was a supplemental payment approved this year, but because some of the, I believe, uh, gambling revenue didn't come in where they thought they would.
Gambling and cigarettes.
Yeah. They're actually going to withhold a little bit on the end of the year. Now, we were lucky or fortunate, I guess, because basically when we bite with those revenues, we're going to get, um, everything we expected, just a little bit more, maybe fifteen to twenty thousand. We were hoping for a little bit more additional on that, but it, it just the unknown makes us concerned to lock in anything higher with what we talked about with some, uh, other lease payments that are going to be coming up in future years that we, um, will have to take on and just, as we've mentioned, trying to build reserves, don't feel like it's safe to go higher than one percent of the time.
I thought you said the finance committee, really we're going to just assume for the step raises only.
We, we did talk about that and we looked quite a bit yesterday and were able to identify some additional expenditures to reduce. And so, um, what I brought to the finance committee yesterday are expenses, um, after removing our debt service payment. So basically our debt service payment, if you look at our total revenues and expenditures and that offset, um, our expenditures for next year are projected to be just a little bit higher than our revenues. But that's because our debt service payment will actually be, um, be paying out a little bit more than what we're bringing in in tax revenue. That works out fine considering our financial plan was played with hammer because our cash account or debt service account can handle that and they have been playing that for all of range. So that's not a concern. So if you take out debt service consideration, going into that finance committee meeting yesterday, our expense, our expenditures were about eighty-eight thousand dollars less than the revenue was projected to bring in. We've made some additional, um, cuts in our expenditures and with that one percent, we will still be at, um, approximately a hundred or a hundred and fifteen thousand in our preliminary budget expectations for, um, additional revenue over our expenditures.
What about with the debt service considerations added to that?
The debt service considerations, um, they're about, we're going to be paying out in debt service about, uh, two hundred and seventy thousand dollars more than we're bringing in. But our cash allowance and debt service has more than enough to offset that. So, uh, according to the guidance.
What would that do to our reserves?
Well, reserves are calculated off our operating funds. They don't take debt service into consideration. So as long as we have enough in debt service to cover those, it doesn't impact our reserves.
We read about, we were trying to sprint to six percent to kind of get a margin. And so I think at the end of the last time we checked, it was about four percent reserves. And our target is twenty to twenty-five percent. And so in the finance committee meeting, we're talking about really needing to limit that to the step only raises. And so what did you learn between yesterday and today that changed the recommendation?
We had a couple of other positions that we were looking to fill that we were able to, um, find a way.
Absorb.
To absorb. And that made a big difference. And then just identified down the road additional ways that we could do that in upcoming years. So.
And I think the concern that I can add is, I mean, I understand we've got to make, and we all understand that, but you know, our certified staff, our staff just, they, they just got the step last year. And so for two years in a row, then even one percent is not great, but it's, it's at least something. And I know that was a concern. And so we kind of rolled up our sleeves and looked to see how we could maybe make that palatable.
So it's a small raise, but I think we need to always remember to connect the dots between the amount of debt that we have and the effect that that has upon our budget and the ability to have salary raises and the ability to have these kinds of things occur. Because we wound up overspending over the last while. It's reduced our reserves considerably and there are other decisions along the way. And so we kind of maxed out our credit cards and our loan liabilities for a while with these things. And now we kind of want to pay that off and can't keep borrowing more. And so we really need to be mindful of that going forward because it does impact our ability to get raises. And we can speak out of one percent, you know, because I know we've been kind of getting a little bit obscure with that for a while. I'm not opposed to that, but, um, you know, we have a, a plan to kind of increase the reserves over the next, say, five plus years. And so we're stepping back from increasing reserves with this a little bit and we're going to probably freeze it or sink a little bit possibly with this plan. And so we really got to find a long, and I know we talked about meeting with Red Lightens a little bit coming up pretty soon and then looking at a little harder, um, to, to, to figure out how those, how those reserves are going to be brought back up. But we've kind of increased our limit to the max and we've taken out bonds and the loan saves. But we've, we've been doing this for a while. Um, and, and eventually something's got to give, you know, the numbers can be to decline expenditures with us or find a way to get the debt, um, the debt under control a little bit because it does impact our ability to, uh, to do.
Well, I think like we've done in the past two years, um, you know, we're having to look because the biggest, um, impact is our, our population, our student population increasing, which of course then directly impacts how many staff are going to be needed and whatnot. So as a result of that, that's where being able to absorb somebody's staff position and not having to, you know, people losing jobs and things like that. I'm glad that we were able to, to manage that. And I think, you know, hopefully, you know, it won't be continuing to decline in, in, in a moment that no one knows that, you know, with everything going on. But that's something that I know as the district boards will continue to watch that because that has to be adjusted accordingly.
Do you know how many, uh, positions we absorbed in order to get the one percent? I mean, approximately three or four?
Um, there were a couple of additional positions and then we looked at, there was a difference in what we got originally projected for increase on electric. But they, they notified yesterday it's going to be, uh, one percent less. And we actually projected a little bit higher, a hundred percent last year. So we were able to look at that electric. But then the other thing that I do need to mention is this budget's been planned on a state act target of sixty-seven, sixty. And that is the lowest that they should pay us on next year. And, uh, you know, I can't tell you what withholdings are going to be. Nobody will, but we fully believe. And, uh, many of those individuals we've talked to feel like they'd be paid a higher amount. We won't get the full seventy-one, forty-five, but this is basically a budget planned on the lowest absolute numbers we should get. So there should be some additional dollars coming in. That will, will help build the reserves. And that's why that also went into consideration on this one percent.
So you're budgeting on four percent less than what it could possibly be at the minimum, correct?
Yes. Yeah. We're budgeting on the minimum. And then there's also some other revenues that we budgeted a lot lower just to be conservative. We, we went through a bunch of those as lower than we normally would just for certainty. We actually on the, um, assessed valuation have been very cautious. I really looked at the CPI because I believe assessed valuation is going to be more than that. And I'm going to hold it back. Um, and honestly, I didn't even put any construction into that because I wanted to look at the absolute minimum dollars that we probably might get with the hope that we would have more versus the opposite.
So what's the total actual dollar amount that the non-certificated staff policies that we just approved were, were required for us to meet? And then also now if we approve one percent, what's the total asset dollars per certificated staff that that would?
The non-certificated total is two hundred and sixty-five thousand, sixty-seven dollars and fifty-one cents. And the one percent over a step will cost us an additional one hundred and fifty-seven thousand, seven hundred and forty-six dollars and sixty-two cents with time savings.
The two hundred and sixty-five we're kind of obligated to.
Yes.
I see both sides of Doc, what you're talking about. And we're, we're trying to tighten our belt in the way we can, um, every penny we can. But also guys, being a former teacher too, we got to show our teachers we're working off of something. It's, it's, we're, we're a good team, obviously. We are. Um, if it's one percent, then it's one percent. But you know, it's, it, even though we're, we're tightening our belt, we got to keep though, we got to keep. If that's, if that's the least we can offer, then, then let's, let's at least do it go further.
I absolutely agree. And what Ted is basing it on is the absolute minimum that we're going to get. So it could have a good opportunity to be more than what sixty-seven point six percent of what we're getting. So.
Right. I appreciate the work you all have done to make this happen. I know it wasn't easy. And it's so important that, like you said, we tighten our, our belts. However, of course, I'm an old teacher. Um, you got to show people they're appreciated, even if it's one percent. And, you know, how Missouri ranks in teacher pay is abominable. So I am grateful for what you pulled off.
It's been a great job of that. I know the finance committee is going to help too. And you know, the other thing that's kind of looming out there that, you know, I'll say this as I'm retiring, but you know, with, with all of the bills out there for, um, tax relief, I, I don't, if that happens, you're going to really take a strong look at some things, um, because, you know, that right there is going to, you know, influence the revenues coming into the district. So, um, you know, we've got a little bit of time to, to think about that. But I know with, um, property tax, there was something, you know, I was looking at here recently with the special committee. Um, and that's something definitely, I think it's never been more important to really watch what, what's going on in Jeff City. Um, because it will definitely impact the district as well as every school district. And I concur with what you guys said. And that's why we said we've got to roll up our sleeves and find something because we can't not do that again.
One other thing that we kind of asked at the finance committee was where, where does like animal district six be ranked in terms of the state averages for teacher salaries? Do we get to check that out? I know Desi's tracking that stuff.
Yeah. I went to comparative data yesterday for school districts with enrollments of one thousand to three thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine students. Um, and out of the hundred and seven districts, I believe we were at seventy-fourty-nine. So we're right in the middle of the bunch. I'm not clear than us, I'm not following us. And that was based on data submitted from last year. Not all school districts have had that submitted for this year. So.
So the salary was about average in Missouri for the size of districts we are?
Yeah, just a little above average, I believe.
And we are, as you will know, ahead of, you know, the, the legal amount as far as for teacher pay as well as teachers of the masters. Um, that will also move forward too because those, those careers that year goes on.
I move that we, um, accept the one percent instead for our teachers.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Don't forget if you have an abstention, you have to state it. So I have to abstain.
We'll do a roll call then. Anne?
Yeah, it's a roll call.
Yes.
Aye.
I, I, I have to abstain.
Abstaining. So that passes. The next item is the administrator salaries.
And that would be, um, the same as certified staff, the recommendation.
And just for clarification, those are included in the dollar amount that it is due to.
And which, first you go on.
It did. There's a hundred and fifty-seven about.
Okay. So there's nothing more added to it.
I move we, we accept the recommendation for administration directors.
I'll second. I'll second. Any other discussion?
Have we done any comparison data between state averages for those positions as well in districts our size? I'd like to hear that.
We fall in the middle on everything. We used to be the lowest, but we fall in the middle. We're not the highest and we're not the lowest.
We have a motion in a second. We'll do a roll call again just to be sure. Anne?
Aye.
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 Aye. Thank you. And then the next thing is the preliminary budget.
There is also, I didn't mention this to you, you know, there is a, they did have a showing that one percent direct that's on there. So that would bring you to seventy-four thousand, eight hundred and four percent.
Okay. The budget, Ted?
So that is this white booklet that you've got in front of you. So if you want to pull that out, um, I'll get the pages. Of course, a requirement is a superintendent's budget message. And so that's, uh, included. I'm not going to read every single thing here because I think you guys are, are fully capable of doing that. Uh, it pretty much dictates what we just talked about, um, to a certain degree. Um, on page, I think it's three or four, I did put some district facts that you can kind of see some data, which I think is helpful to look at. Um, so for example, you can kind of see what our district population has been. And I just chose some years at random. So you can kind of see, so back in two thousand, which I know it's been a long time ago, but we had three thousand seven hundred and eighty-five students and then this past year we had three thousand one hundred and fifty-six students. You can also see that comparatively to the city of Hannibal. And I put Marion County and Rawls County on there as well as the state. So you can kind of see what that looks like. And then I think that middle graph is, is important too, to look at our enrollment, um, showing both by primary and middle and high school and then total. As you can see, our elementary grades, as we know, as we've talked about it, have declined over the years. I just used the last five years. So going from one thousand five hundred and fifty-nine kids in kindergarten through fifth grade to this past year, one thousand three hundred and ninety-two students. You can see middle school has declined a lot over the years, um, from eight hundred and seventy-two back five. You can see middle school has declined a lot over the years, from eight hundred and seventy-two back five years ago to six hundred and fifty-six. Now, I think that's a low class and it'll start rebounding a little bit, at least that's the hope. And then high school, you can see, has actually increased a little bit and it's kind of held it down. So I think that's good to see. Also, I put some data in there to show the ADA. You can kind of see what that looks like. And then ninety percent plus attendance. And I know we've talked a lot about attendance. You can see back in two thousand, or twenty-twenty, we had eighty-six point two percent of our students that were attending school. Ninety percent or more of the time. This past year, it was seventy-five point eight percent. And I tell you, our administrators and our teachers are working hard to get on there. And we've talked about some of those things. And then you can see the student teacher ratio and the student classroom ratio, which we've always been really good in that situation. And that's something we've been actively just monitor because that's important. Then on the next page, I did put some data about pre-reduced lunch. I think that's, it was kind of interesting to see. I think in this board package and our consent agenda that showed the end of the year as a district with fifty-four percent, which is good. And I think it kind of fluctuates two, three percent, somewhere in there.
You want to talk about the revenues and those things? Or you want me to?
We've already kind of talked about some of the information with the revenues. The big thing is complicated house calculated, but looking at the, our weighted average daily attendance has been over the last many years. And that's becoming a combination of weighted ADA and weighted average membership. And that's going to be phased in over several years. So next year, it'll be ninety percent weighted ADA and ten percent weighted average membership. And that will continue to go up. It'll go down by ten percent on the average, or the ADA, and it'll go up by ten percent on the membership until it becomes fifty-fifty. And we do believe that's going to help us a little bit in calculation over the years with the membership. We feel like that helps help a little bit over our weighted average daily attendance. We mentioned the calculation, how state revenue for sixty-seven, sixty should be going up. We don't know exactly where it's going to sit with the holdings. Local revenue, I'm sorry, I kind of skipped around. Local revenue with the assessed valuation going up. The information that was sent out by both Marion and Rawls County, we believe, will hit that CPI mark of the two point nine, another consumer price index of the two point nine percent. Could be the lower of that or assessed valuation in both counties that send out transportation of the assessed valuation would be more than that amount. So. Federal revenues will be somewhere where it had been. We have lots a little bit and actually going to hit into within the final, I'm going to mention some of those things. Areas where we won't be getting as much. I was going to highlight where our expenditures went down, where our expenditures went up. Major, looking at the revenues for that change. So when we get to those documents further back, we'll highlight some of that information. You want me to do that?
Yeah, go for it.
I'm going to ask you to skip back just a little bit. I know you've got several plays that we have organized your information this year to get back to what looks like those Excel spreadsheets. So after the information, after the flat balances. So one of the things when we had the state auditor report last year, it mentioned some things that we need to do after that. Good to do this year. So what you haven't always seen in the past is the expenditure and revenue by source. So that's just telling me the source of where those funds are coming in for the revenues. And then what we're spending those dollars on for the expenditures. So that's broken down before the local, which is local and county, and state, and then federal. Now, the next page, expenditure by fund. That's just telling you which fund we're spending that out of. So general, if you consider that more operations and some of your support staff. Special revenues, more what we call your teachers. Debt service, obviously, that's what we're paying off your obligations on primarily. And then capital projects is where you're spending dollars for major purposes to do this. And then some of those other funds, you can see through service fund, activity fund, where some rates are coming in. Then we get to the expenditure by objects. I'm just going to highlight a couple things. You'll look at the twenty-five, twenty-six, requested column compared to the estimated actual. So several things taking into consideration, certificate salaries, you know, since you have the continued last year. And then non-certificated salary is also down. The public are going to ask how is that, but we just gave a significant raise to this non-certificated staff. Reason is we had several teachers last year that were not certificated and we had to pay out of that. Fund one, and then they earned their certification, so they even go over or pay out a certificated salary. Even though those individuals moved from one salary to the other, one salary source to the other, which was always a savings problem. So just want to highlight overall, in comparison to last year, if you combine salary, insurance, retirement, FICA and Medicare, based on the current numbers we have in, it's over a billion dollars less than what we paid out for those things last year. So that's the bulk of our savings this year in our budget. If you compare that to twenty-three, twenty-four, just to give you a little bit more longevity, it's almost three hundred and dollars the difference. So that's where the bulk of our savings are going to come. If you ask anybody meditation, that's where you find most of your individuals. And that's true attrition, not anybody losing their job. So we're very happy to be able to stay in that. Something you'll notice that's up significantly, data processing services. Honestly, we just have a lot of things we're having to pay for with. Infinity campuses cost us quite a bit more than what our old processor or what our old system, sorry. This K twelve used to cost us. Increases in security-based programs to ensure our network is safe and secure.
So you're saying that most of that is coming from the actual updating of our instrumentation and not necessarily.
Keeping my data safe.
John Locke and the technical criteria, we talked a lot. What is required and what can we shave off? And we have everything that's in there and things that we need to have for one reason or another, we won't feel like so. But it is an increase cost. This year, honestly, the estimated actual, that number is really higher than that. That was a more budgeted number. Other thing to highlight as far as changes in property insurance, once again, that went up significantly last year. It's going to go up again this year, property, liability, work, all those kind of things. Our supply budget overall is down. We looked at that. We tried to make sure we were consistent in all of the buildings and how many dollars were allocated by, based on their student population and have cleaned that up a little bit. We were able to save a lot of money on fuel this year, so that, I just have a little bit, and feel like that will be consistent. You'll see our instructional equipment budget is, expenditure budget is down, and honestly, we replaced a lot of our home books. But until we ensure we have the dollars to do that, we're just being very careful on what that looks like until we see what dollars actually come in.
Can we get any grant money for that?
We're actively looking for that. We used to get Title IV money, I think, that we used to buy out our technology with. The Title IV money has not been, I don't even know if it's currently a thing anymore, but we're not getting any if it is. School buses, we paid one off this year that we had a lease on, that's why that one's down a little bit. That's good. We also purchased two this year at no expense due to some donations that were made, so that was great. And then you'll see our expenses on interest and principal that hasn't gone up, as I mentioned, for debt service due to new bond issues that were issued. So that's the major differences in our expenditures, both positive and negative. I guess I'll ask you a question, I'm kind of rattling, I'm just sorry. Okay. Budget requested on revenue by objects on the next page, you'll see current taxes. We're anticipating some additional dollars there due to the subsvaluation increasing. If you go down a little bit more to the object fifty-three eleven basic formula, I've definitely looked through the budget tool, they are very, they are saying the information we have in there is accurate, it can be based on knowledge we have, so that would be up just a little bit. Fastring trust down just a little bit. Honestly, that was kind of expected based on some projections we have in there this year. And then we have some federal funding that we are expecting to receive a little less on, title, and then I D E A, which is our, and our spent RBA title management, still works very hard on those budgets. And there's just not many dollars being put towards that. So we found ways to cut a lot of expenditures, but we also have a little bit less revenue coming in some areas and some higher expenses. And I know that a lot of stuff has run off.
What about the early childhood special education then? Fifty-three, fourteen.
So early childhood special, what happened with that was we actually received, we did payments last year. So our payment from the prior year came in in July instead of June. And then we received another one in the spring. And then it's been a little bit less allocated, so it's kind of a good trip away. And that's a lowest, and we could essentially get a little bit more, but we just didn't want to over budget on it. So hopefully it could play a bit.
I have a question, it's probably really naive and I'm new here. But we have wonderful private schools here and we have wonderful parents homeschooling. We also have children who quit school at a very young age. Do we reach out to those families to try to get, all of across the board, not, not earmarking any, to try to get those kids back in school?
Can I actually? I've become an expert on this in the last two years with my new job, working hard on behavioral health. And schools trying everything they can. Many of those kids that, I know I have a case of thirty-one kids, seven of them are quote, "homeschooled", and I say quote. I hope they're doing their best that they can. But a lot of them, there's discipline issues that parents, their kids often get in trouble at school. Parents get tired of hearing it, so the first thing they say is, okay, I'm going to homeschool my kid. And then it's very extremely difficult to get them back. And we can, we can try, we can pray, we can do this, you know, we can call. But I think a lot of it deals with some behaviors that happen at school. And like I said, mom, the moms and dads are just like.
Missouri is the easiest state in the union to homeschool in also.
Right, man, I used to.
It's unfortunate.
I used to call Clara up once a year to complain about the standards Missouri has for children quitting. And it fell on deaf ears. I just don't want us to quit trying.
We also send, just in addition to what Ron and it said, we also send a letter each year just to, you know, make sure that our information is correct. Because, you know, a family chooses, let's just use homeschool as an example. They're supposed to let the school know that they're going to assume responsibility for educating their child. And I know you might have seen any social media, sometimes I think that's misconstrued to be something that it's not. It's literally us doing it because especially when these, if a student that has I E T, special education services, we're required to do that. So I know sometimes people think we're trying to get into business or anything like that, but we're really just trying to make sure we're upholding our idea of what we're supposed to be doing. And hoping that if they ever do want to come back to our school, we would like to happen. So we do do that too. I do know that when virtual instruction came about and some families were doing that, I knew that that was initially when that first came about, superminists could, had to approve or not approve. But then that little something changed where superminists didn't do that. But I know many kids, you know, they're not making successful and that they'll be disenrolled. You know, that's not, that's not a special virtual school, but choose us to do that. And so that's part of those kids that are kind of falling between the cracks unfortunately.
I think one thing that's really helping guys also, we have some kids here as the alternative program. I think we need to spare that even more, if we can, to try and help those kids when they get that extra help. One night, I've got a couple of kids I work with that are in alternative school. And if it wasn't for that placement, they would have been probably suspended from school and done. But this gives them an opportunity. And we really need to think about broadening that to more, to more kids. That maybe that smaller class size setting is best for them so they can be successful there instead of a hallway of four hundred kids where there's opportunities to make decisions that sometimes aren't very wise.
Anne, I was going to add, when we talked about those kids that maybe do a virtual program, if it's a program that's been approved by Missouri and then they are asked to step out because they aren't complying with it, they notify, that program has to notify the local school district and we reach out. The parents are supposed to reach out, but we also reach out to make connections if they have been disenrolled based on the school's request. And we try to re-enroll them with us as well and with that context. So we do have some safeguards in there as well.
Right, I just, I just want to keep trying.
Me too.
Absolutely.
Anything else with the budget?
No, we just need to approve that, because we gather that it depends on. And of course, this is preliminary, it's going to change, probably change today before this paper was printed. But at least it gives us a guideline and then we'll continue to adjust that as the year progresses.
I make a motion to approve the annual budget for twenty-five, twenty-six as given to us at this point.
Second. Second, any other discussion? All in favor? I oppose. Okay. The next item on the agenda is patron comments. Per Board Policy two point two, during the patron comment portion of the agenda, patrons may address the board on those items that are specific to the approved agenda or who have properly requested to appear before the Board of Education.
I move we adjourn the regular meeting and call a closed session of the Board of Education and reconvene at seven thirty-five for the purpose of discussing hiring, firing, discipline or promoting employees, scholastic probation, expulsion or graduation of identifiable individuals, including records of individual examination scores, individually identifiable personnel, records, performance ratings, or records pertaining to employees or applicants, and records protected by law as provided by Section six, one, zero point zero, two, one, paragraphs three, six, thirteen, and fourteen of the Missouri Revised Statutes. Those to be admitted to the closed session will be Susan Johnson, Richard Crapp, Ted Sampson, Megan Carr, Michelle McFoy, Justin McLeod, Jill McLeod.
One second.
Seven thirty-five.
Seven thirty-five. Roll call.
All right.
Aye.
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 Thank you.